Good evening, everyone. This is a Columbus City Council meeting. The date is June 11, 2025, and the time is 6:00 P. M. And we're calling the meeting to order. And the second item on the list is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is the adoption of the agenda. And the first thing is a motion. And I'm going to make a motion. I, Ron Hanigraff, move to approve the agenda for the June 11, 2025 City Council meeting with the additions of the supplemental bill list, along with the letter of resignation from Brenda Oswald, accounting assistant, which were provided to the council as a handout prior to this meeting. And item F, which is a closed session.
This is Janet's second.
Did you second it?
I seconded.
Yep.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. It was seconded on the adoption of the agenda. Anybody else have any items, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Scott, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. We're going to go down to the public forum. And this is kind of a new protocol. We're going to start reading what the public forum is about. The Columbus City Council welcomes residents and property owners to the public forum. The purpose of the forum is to provide an opportunity to respectfully present issues of concerns to the council. The council will listen to the issues, but will not engage in a dialogue with the presenter. Questions from the council will be for clarification only. The public forum will not be used as a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments made, but rather for hearing citizens for informational purposes only. If a majority of the council would like to address the issue in more detail, it can be added to the agenda or can be addressed during the regular agenda of a future meeting or referred to staff for further review and response. So I'm going to open up the public forum. Is there anybody in the crowd that'd like to step forward?
The Columbus Lions.
Oh, oh, great. And is it that you signed in, Gina?
I did not.
I did.
You did? Well, good. Well, could we state your name and your address?
Oh, Gina Shirvin. I live in Hugo, but I'm here with the Columbus Lions.
And Julie Kirkidey, I live in Columbus. I am also with the Columbus Lions.
Can you move the mic over for you? Thank you.
So we want to just present a couple of things tonight to the council about building the relationship with the city and the Columbus Lions. So we are here to talk about an event, another event in the park in August, which would coincide with the Night to Unite. And then also to maybe talk about an Arbor Day, Earth Day co-sponsor event for next year, for 2026, between the city and the Lions, like we used to do in the past, where we gave the trees away. We had arborists here. We had the DNR here, that sort of thing. So I think Julie has a little bit more information on the Night to Unite.
Okay, yes. So the Columbus Lions would like to host a community event in the park. And it would be a gathering here at the park for Night to Unite. And so Night to Unite is going to parent hosted by Anoka County. I think it might be a statewide event, maybe countrywide. I'm not sure. But it's always the first Tuesday in August. And it's kind of advertised as building strong, safe, united neighborhoods, crime prevention and awareness, police and community partnerships. And so we would register with Anoka County as an official Night to Unite site and then advertise on Facebook and Nextdoor, probably put something up at the park. We'd like to do it from 6:00 to 8:00 P. M. And it will just be mostly all about gathering and talking. You know, not about a big production or food sales or anything. It's just people getting together. But we will have some snacks and some beverages. And we'll bring some yard games, maybe some cornhole. Just keep it friendly and social. And yeah, and we would just ask if you would all like to join us. Please do that. And also, we would like to ask if you would put it on the city calendar as a community event.
Absolutely. Just drop by, and we'll get the permit and everything ready. I don't think it's booked. I think that's a great idea to do that and incorporate that with all the other parties going on in the city.
Perfect. Awesome. Anything that, yeah, we can, we'll get the, I have to stop on Monday anyway. So we'll get the permit and the check dropped off for that, to reserve the park.
Is that the permit you're talking about? It's just to reserve the pavilion?
Yes.
And then would the city be interested in doing a joint event again for like the Arbor Day, Earth Day situation? If there's no interest, we can just cut it and we'll let it go. I just know we've had some residents from Columbus ask us if we would be interested in doing it again because they really enjoyed it when it was a big deal. You know, like when Cal was involved and that sort of thing. It was a wonderful event. It was busy. It would just be another way to get people here at the city and more involved in meeting you guys and meeting us.
Say, Jack, you know, I skipped a part of consent agenda. But we're on the open forum here. Should we set up another meeting to talk about this issue?
You can direct staff to work with them and then get back to you. And we can present that approval later.
Okay. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. We've got a new business now, Davie Tree Service, which are arborists that you could tap into maybe here in Columbus.
Davie's Tree Service?
Davie Tree Services is going to be opening up in Columbus here. Yeah.
Is that all you have, Gina?
Yep. For tonight.
Thank you.
For coming. I, I.
Thank you. Thank you.
Both of you.
We'll go back to consent agenda. But when we talk on open forum, we're not supposed to converse with the people. Okay? So like when you, but this was a different issue right off the bat. So, but that's what the open forum is about, the public bringing it to us. So my mistake here, but let's go to item B, the consent agenda. Anybody like to make a motion on it?
I have a question. So we, we accepted the letter of resignation up in number A, but now it's also in number B? Or am I misunderstanding?
Number A was to change, to amend the agenda.
Was just amended to add it? Okay. I have not read all of these minutes. There was a bunch of changes or some changes going back and forth. And so I was holding off till there was a final version, thinking there'd be a final version here, but there's not. So I, I, I do, I did read the LBAE minutes. And I had some edits to that, but I didn't get a chance to read the other ones. So I would be abstaining on those. That's.
Yeah, I'm just reading through them too. I mean, there's some grammatical errors as well that I'm seeing. Are you saying on this one here?
The one that I, that I, excuse me, the one that I edited out of the April 17th, the LBAE. Because I figured that would be the easiest one. So I read that one first. And then that's as far as I got. My name spelled wrong again. But that, that isn't the only edit that I had. It had a few other edits. But there's no video of this one. So when I went back to try to find the video to see if I was remembering correctly, I couldn't find the video.
We have it on Zoom.
So we didn't.
I can send you the video.
Well, it's, I mean, if everybody else read it and they, they're okay with it, I, I just, there were some things in here that I thought, I don't think that's right. But I, I didn't have any notes and I couldn't watch it. So, anyway.
Did you want to pull one? No.
I, I'm just saying that that's the only one I got to. And I didn't read the other ones. So I'm not going to vote yea or nay on anything I didn't read. I didn't have a chance to read. That's me. I know you guys had comments, so you read them.
This is Jenny. Would you like for us to strike them and review them at the next meeting? Would that be more comfortable?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. Is there any issue with striking them, Jack, through, through the mayor? And just take them off for now and we'll approve them under the next agenda?
That would be fine. These aren't time sensitive at this point.
So then you'd be looking for a motion for item number one, bill payments only at this point?
And the resignation in number six, or five.
We'd be looking to approve one, five, and six.
Okay, well, this is Scott. I'll make the motion then to approve the consent agenda. Items number one, five, and six has presented the resignation letter of Brenda Oswald and the supplemental bill list, which were distributed to council prior to the June 11, 2025 meeting.
This is.
Drop. Jenny?
Go ahead, Rob.
Rob, second.
We got a motion and seconded it on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Scott, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. We're going to go to item C, number two, in a minute. But first of all, we're going to get to it later on. But when we talk about AI, Assistant City Manager Aaron Ferga explained to us that we start interrupting each other, it messes up AI. So AI will know what conversation is going on. It'll start to make, am I correct, Aaron?
So for instance, Mr. Mayor, as you allude to, if Councilmember Wendell is speaking and is in mid-sentence, and Councilmember Bush interrupts the conversation, not as in interrupting intentionally in a negative way, but he has some input, ChatGPT or whatever AI version might think that Mr. Wendell is still speaking and it picks up what Councilmember Bush was saying. So if we intend on using AI to minutes to make things more cleaner, it would be nice to let each member formally finish their thought before being interrupted. However, that's a procedural thing that you all need to agree on, whether you want to go formal with your meeting procedure or if you're okay with the informal. Just, it's just a little more challenging, that's all.
I have a question, Aaron. If, if it's not an interruption, so say Scott has his sentence and then Ron says something, but he doesn't say this is Ron, will it also think that?
It certainly will.
So really, the, the solution to that is to ask for recognition to speak?
Which is a very formal process of Robert's Rules of Order. And it's a change for some people. It's hard to, hard to make that adjustment, but that would be helpful.
Well, I know that Bill knows a lot about this. But you go up to the state Capitol, it is so formatted that you can't speak unless somebody says something. Correct, Bill?
Yes, and, and that certainly has not been the tradition here. I mean, it's been more free flowing. And so it's really up to you. I mean, you know, one thing that I would point out is that you're presumably, you're checking the minutes against a recording as well. You're not simply relying on AI to produce the final cut. So it's up to you whether you want to adopt that kind of formal approach.
Well, I think the conversation came up is that I think this free flowing that we are doing is causing probably some of the problem. It's not the entire problem, but it doesn't help the issue. So I think we all have to watch each other. We'll keep the free flowing unless somebody wants to change the format. Either raise your hand or watch because sometimes maybe Scott isn't looking at Rob or Rob isn't looking at Jenny or I'm not looking. And we both speak at the same time. Then we back, back off and things get confusing. So is there any suggestions from the council?
Yeah, this is Scott. Jen, didn't you, what was your suggestion? That maybe we do be a little more formal and ask the mayor to be recognized?
Well, I think there, yeah, I think there's two ways of doing it. One is to ask for recognition from Ron to speak. And actually, you do that once in a while, Rob. Or you can, before you speak, say, this is Janet, this is Scott, so that you're identifying yourself every time you speak. Either one of those, I think, would solve the problem.
Yeah.
No, okay. This is Scott. For the record, I'm probably more likely to interrupt Rob than he is me. But anyway, you know, even just saying, you know, Mr. Mayor, this is Scott. And if it's okay with the mayor, not necessarily waiting for you to respond, but the assumption being made that we're now being recognized.
I, I try to view everybody to watch because I, sometime I'll look down and see Rob hold his hand up or something. So I'm at fault too. So, but yeah, if we can get more into saying who we are talking. And if you want to talk or something, raise your hand or throw a piece of paper at me or something, or a pen. But let's, we'll all try to get together and work this out. So let's go on to item number C, which is Camping World IUP and Development Agreement Amendment, pages four through 20. Oh, no, wait, we're not doing that? Well, we did the consent agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay. Got off on another tangent there. Okay, Camping World IUP and Development Agreement Amendments, pages four through 21. And Jack, you're going to start it off, then Bill's going to take it?
We're just going to let Bill deliver this at the beginning. He has the extensive background on it and is the expert on this item. So Bill, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, City Attorney Bill Griffith, addressing the item C, point two, Camping World IUP and Development Agreement. This is a simple amendment, simple in that it's just changing a couple of words. It does have an impact, however, and it comes up in this context after the interim use permit was approved to allow storage on an adjacent site. I believe it's to the south of, of the site. So it's the Camping World site that is to the south and the adjacent site is south of that. And that was a storage site. For many years, it was not permitted. It was not allowed. And we came up with this process by issuing an interim use permit that allowed the two sites to act as one, essentially. And this, the attorney, the inside attorney at Camping World called and said, well, if, if the property is sold, then the, the way it was written, the interim use permit would expire. And essentially, we would no longer have access to that site. The idea with that was to encourage the two sites to be combined if they were ever sold. They simply made a request and there's a gentleman online, Grant Dushak, I believe, so he can answer questions if, if you have any. But we came up with this approach. They made a request because it was a change in the condition. We said it had to come back to you as the city council. So if you look at the change in the condition, it's in the packet and it's in the Development Agreement, section Exhibit B. So if you look on page 15 of the, of the packet, I believe. Do you all have Exhibit B in front of you?
Yes.
So it would, it would read now with the change, "The IUP shall terminate upon the cessation, cessation of the business on the property." The idea there that, that, that adjacent property could be sold, either property could be sold, but as long as that business continues to operate as a functioning business, they could continue to store their, have their open storage adjacent. So we felt that that was reasonable. I think ideally, you know, those properties would be combined. But we can't control either property. We can simply, you know, eliminate the opportunity for storage. So it's really up to the council whether you want to adopt that change. I don't, I don't know if we'll get to a development agreement without the change and then we'd be back to a non-compliant site. And so this is, this is, the administrator suggests this has a long history. And while this is not exactly how we would handle it, it's, it's close enough and it, and it makes the use legal, which is, it's not been a legal use for a number of years. And there's a representative on the line.
Mayor? Rob? This is a recognized question for Bill. This is Rob. Are we talking about the parcel that's south of the old Coats RV? Are we talking about the mini stores south of Camping World? Because I don't believe that's called like Forest River RV, not Camping World.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bush, this is the city attorney responding. You are correct. It's the former Coats site. It's owned by the same group that owns Camping World. It has a different brand, I believe, but different advertising and brand. But it is essentially the same type of use. And so it is that southern property that was Coats. And, and adjacent to it, there's a property to the south of that that is the open storage lot.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Certainly.
There's also some questions for Bill. This is Janet. So I had to read this a couple of times because I, like, I was like, who owns what? Who's on first, who's on second? So let me, let me just see if I got this right. So there's Camping World. They're leasing from J Coats. And they're also leasing from the owner of the other parcel, which is not in front of my face right now. But let's see. It's in the, it's in the signature page. Anyways, there's, there's like lots of, lots of cooks in the kitchen here.
That's correct.
Gate Avenue Properties LLC. So there are two separate owners, right? One for J Coats, then this Gates Avenue Properties that owns the, the lot south. So my question is, our usual modem operandi for an IUP is that there's a end date. And I don't see an end date on this, which makes me a little worried. And my second question is, so if one parcel sells and the other does not, then what happens?
So that was, that was the, since, since the operator of the business is leasing both parcels, they're, they don't control who owns the underlying real estate. It can be sold at any time. And they didn't want to essentially be put out of business, at least as to the open storage. The open storage is, is what is governed by the IUP. And so the argument was, well, either one of these individual property owners could sell their parcel and we, you know, they, they perhaps have a long-term lease on, on the former Coats site, but they don't have the right to control the open storage lot piece without this interim use permit. And so they didn't want it going away. You're right. This is different than our, our typical mode of operation. Typically, like the billboards are on a 20-year interim use permit. Home businesses are on a five-year interim use permit. What's required by the statute is that there is, that the interim use permit ceases upon some specific condition. So in this case, the specific condition is that the business ceases and then the interim use permit would go away. So yes, it is, it is different than just about every other interim use permit in the city. The, the reason staff and the city attorney felt comfortable with this proposition is because the, the development agreement and the interim use permit is intended to tie these properties together as if they were jointly owned. And, and so as long as there's a business there, the business that's on the property today, you know, then the permit would continue.
So this is Janet again. I guess what I'm puzzled about is that you've got three parties signing this agreement. If one party sells, do you have to bring them back to redo a new agreement? Because now maybe the, maybe the party that sells is gonna, I don't know, put a go-kart parked there or something. I don't know. I'm just, you know, it may not be that they're, you know, the new owner is interested in having a bunch of RVs sitting there. So I felt, I felt uneasy about the, the possibilities of this. And I also felt uneasy because I don't understand why this is a problem for, for Camping World. I mean, if it sells, that's a bigger problem, right? Our agreement isn't the problem. The fact is that they aren't going to have enough space to, to store all their, their units that they have on the, on the property that sells unless the new owner wants to enter into the same sort of agreement, which I'm assuming would mean that everybody has to come to the table and re-sign this.
Again, Bill Griffith responding. The development agreement, because it's a development agreement under zoning, it runs with the land. And so the, let's just say, for the sake of argument, the storage lot sells. Okay, the storage lot sells, the new owner comes in, they don't have to do anything to continue this arrangement. So somebody could buy that open storage lot. The lease of the open storage lot continues. The interim use permit runs with the land and continues until the business ceases. Now, if, if, let's take the, the main lot, if you will, the former Coats site. If that sells, obviously, that either means the business is, is ceasing or there's just another owner that is going to be the lassoer. And again, if it's just another owner who's going to be the lassoer, then everything stays in place. There's no change. The Camping World doing business as, what is it, Forest River, continues. If, if the business ceases, then the permit goes away. Nobody has a right to come in and operate the same business on the property if that business ceases.
And this is Janet. And what would be the hardship if this IUP had, pick a date, a five-year end date? That they would just have to renew it?
Right. And I, and I think the, that is certain, I, I checked the city code because I wanted to make sure there wasn't a, a time deadline on this permit and there isn't. So the home businesses have five years, the billboards have 20. This particular permit did not have a term. And so we can, we can, the city can approve it in this fashion or the council could say, I'd be much more comfortable on a renewal of five or 10 or, you know, some number of years.
So this is Janet. I mean, the reason I'm bringing this up is because there has, as you mentioned, there's been this long history of non-compliance. So a agreement with a no end date on it makes me a little nervous when that's been the history. And I get this is meant to try to solve that problem. But I don't, I, I don't know. I don't have a lot of confidence in, in it as a solution. I'm not against it, but I, I feel like we have consistently had IUPs with end dates, whatever that end date is. And I'm not, I'm not very comfortable with one not having one. So that would be, that's my, I would rather that we have an end date.
Bill, this is Ron. I got a question. So Coats had a CUP on that property first.
Yes.
And then Camping World came in and took over that CP, CUP. Am I correct?
Right. And that's permanent use that runs with the property. So no problem there.
Okay. So if they sell that property and another camping facility didn't come in and the CUP is done in a year, right? In other words, is it that property? If it doesn't, let's say Coats comes back and wants to start it up again. Then it's, it's back to the same CUP it was before. Am I correct?
Mr. Mayor, Bill Griffith responding. The, what would happen is if the property was sold, the business ceases, the CUP continues to run with the property. There is an argument that if they don't use it for the same purpose, after a year, that CUP goes away and then it starts all over. You'd have a new development application for whatever. But, but the, the condition as written is to try and make sure that the business now functioning as a whole can continue notwithstanding who's in title, underlying title. And that seemed reasonable to us. It also seems reasonable that, like most interim use permits, there might be a, a term of years. Perhaps it's more than five years. Perhaps it's not as many as the billboards at 20 because they're not, you know, most of the improvements are there. We did, we did, as a city, condition this interim use permit on some additional landscaping. And I don't know the status of that landscaping, if it's been installed. So there's a minimal amount of improvement going on to the property in light of the issuance of the interim use permit. So again, we, we wanted to facilitate getting this back to the council at the request of the applicant whose legal counsel was concerned about the way it was written. And we said the only way to, to have another pass at that is to get it in front of the city council.
Rob, did you have a question?
I had, I had concern about this Gate Avenue Properties actually being an LLC. I'm not finding them in the Secretary of State. So I tried it several different ways. So I don't know that they're actually a registered business or proper tax identification.
That has not been an issue previously, so we can check on that.
I mean, typically, they would, right? From my past looking properties up, you'd, you would have some sort of LLC within the Secretary of State. And maybe it's just written here wrong. But I tried just Gate Avenue. I tried Gate Properties, so.
We can certainly check on that. That's something that usually before signing, it would be reviewed, so.
Thank you.
Jenny?
This is Jenny. I have one question relating to something Bill just noted as well. Are there any code or compliance issues that we're currently addressing relating to this property that we need to be concerned about?
It's my understanding that this would address the primary code issue, which is the fact that that outdoor storage is not allowed on the adjacent lot without some legal approval. And, and that approval has already been. And that approval has already been granted. So this development agreement is one of the conditions of that approval. So the compliance isn't finalized until there's a development agreement signed for this property.
And this is Jenny. You noted landscaping as well, correct?
Yes. And I don't know the status of landscaping on the property. Maybe we can ask the applicant to address that question.
Yeah, are you ready for that answer? Grant DuCoches with Excel Engineering, representing Camping World. In regards to landscaping, landscaping has been installed to date per the approved plan. So it is in compliance.
This is Jenny. Thank you very much for that answer. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Scott. I also see that you actually had till October 1st to comply with that. So you've complied with it early. Appreciate that. While we're at it here, could we make some corrections? And some, like on the interim use permit, you have the date published as December 5th. Could we make that the correct year on there? Page 19 of our packet, it's 2023-4. I'm assuming that should be December 5th, 2024?
Yeah, I did prepare the staff memo. Found it. So 3/21.
And then on page 21, I think we struck the term of the IUP in line 1. I'm assuming we don't want to strike the IUP acronym there. We want to keep that, just a little housekeeping note there. It should say the IUP, but we struck IUP.
I don't know where you are.
Page 21 of our packet. So for you, that would be interim use permit. And then it would be the third page, 2024 Camping World Outdoor Storage IUP Conditions, number one. Condition number one.
Okay. That's in the record?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yeah, Rob?
I wanted to retract what I said. I didn't see in the beginning 3/21. So I looked it up, and it's actually owned by Sarah Coats. So Coats owns that parcel too.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Ron.
Mayor, I have another question. This is Janet. Let's see, on page 21 or page 3 of 4, the property owners of those two lots are responsible for the maintenance of the stormwater ponds, correct? That's what it looks like it says. I just want to. So again, if this sells and there isn't a new IUP, how do you ensure that the new owner would take on responsibility of that stormwater pond maintenance? They didn't sign up, they didn't sign, re-sign a document like this?
Right. Again, this agreement, because it's under zoning, runs with the land. And so that requirement runs with the property.
So that was going to be my second question. So when you say this agreement runs with the land, is it like forever, like a CUP?
It's as long as that interim use permit is in existence. So if the, that's one of the arguments, perhaps, against having a term other than cessation of the business? Because this is intended to be present as long as the business is operating. If you introduce a term of years, then you would have to get the new owners because the permit would potentially expire. You might have to get the new owners to sign the development agreement because it doesn't permanently run with the land. So that's one thing to think about when you impose a term.
I don't see that as a negative myself, Janet. This is Janet saying that.
I can barely hear you.
I said, this is Janet, and I don't see that as a negative myself. I mean, I feel like there, again, there's a lot of people in the mix here. And we have a business owner that for years has not been compliant and has not been responsive to the city's concern about that compliance. So I feel like a tighter leash might be a little bit better in this case. And so if you did, I mean, I don't have a timeframe in mind, you know, five years, 10 years, whatever. But at least then you would have a period of everybody's doing what they said they were going to do to base an extension on. Otherwise, if this goes south, we have no recourse. It appears.
This is Ron. Are we, we're talking about the Coats one, the south one?
No, there's two. No, there's two. We're talking about both of them, I think.
Well, I understand the first one. Every time I've ever gone in there and talked to them, it's always, that's the other store, that's not us. So I'm trying to figure out, can you connect the two like that?
No. This is the former Coats site and the adjacent parcel to the south. They're separate permits, separate underlying owners. They happen to be the same operator, is my understanding. Different brands, as was noted by the council. Again, this is Bill Griffith speaking. So that's, whatever happens in that store in the north, that's a separate subject.
The Camping World store or RV.com or whatever. There's like so many names out there. I'm not sure how to refer to them either.
That's why you kind of confused me when you were talking about. I know they had the parking issue and we were fighting with them up there with that. But they're two separate issues. So we can't bring in that.
Well, so this is Janet. But that's who is leasing the land from these two other property owners. So it's their inventory that's sitting on that land. Correct?
Yes. I mean, presumably, they have the same or similar inventory. I don't know their operation that well. But still, you can't, they're separate zoning. They're separate permitting. There's a separate CUP. We should deal with the application, the amendment that's in front of you.
Right.
Okay.
And I do want to say just again that while we, you know, didn't appreciate the non-compliance for multiple years and encouraged the owners to come into compliance, this was their initiative to us about a year ago when they said, what can we do under the circumstances to come into compliance? And our first answer was the same as our long-term answer, which was buy the property, join the property, and combine them and operate as one site. And that was not workable because of all, as you noted, the multiple parties involved. And so our second answer was, well, there is under law the concept of a zoning lot where the zoning, it's treated as one lot for the purposes of zoning. We would do that through a development agreement, which we have in front of us. We would do that through an interim use permit, which is subject to the changing condition. And so, you know, it was approved with the condition as you see written. And then only upon, you know, review of the development agreement did someone in their attorney's office say, wait a minute, we can't have this ceasing. You know, now that we're in compliance, we can't have this ceasing when somebody decides to sell the property. So, you know, we entertain the condition. We said we'd bring it forward as a recommendation. And so now it's up to you to decide whether to make any changes.
Mayor, could, this is Janet. Could we ask the gentleman on Zoom whether or not having a end date, a timestamp on this, whether it's five years or 10 years, that would present a hardship for the company? And if you can explain why, that would be really helpful.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Yes.
Yes. Again, Grant DuCoches with Excel Engineering. So yes, appreciate the comments, Janet specifically. And I did want to recap some of the questions here, clear up a few things and touch on this. So first, I know Camping World is a design partner and engineering partner with them. We work with them throughout the country on a lot of different sites and developments. They did come to us on this one, and they are committed to getting into compliance. They spent a lot of money on landscaping, also a lot from a consulting side on our end to get this up to compliance from a help and assistance standpoint. So I do know that they are thoroughly committed to keeping this site in compliance, and it is important to them. And that's why we're here tonight. And that's why we've been talking over the past six to eight months to get this cleaned up. So we do appreciate the time and appreciate working with city staff to get to a point here tonight. On that, I know there's a lot of questions on hardships in the different lots. It is confusing from an arrangement of two separate property owners. It would be a preference if it was one property. But unfortunately, Camping World doesn't have control over that as far as what that is. They have lease agreements on both parcels, and they are different owners. But they are operating it as one contiguous business. So it is a hardship because their leases are long-term. Their leases are not short terms. So if there was a short-term expiration on this interim use, there would be a hardship that they have a lease that's longer than what the duration or the expiration of this interim use permit is. So they wouldn't have a guarantee that they could keep running their storage facility, their main building that we're talking about, the old Coats RV. That's fine. As Attorney Bill mentioned, that is under a conditional use permit, and that runs with the land. So it's not an issue. That's not part of this conversation. It's just for the storage lot immediately south that the landscaping was put in for. And that cannot go along with the conditional use permit because it's a separate parcel and a separate owner. However, the business operates as one. So Camping World needs the assurance that their business can operate, which is why their attorney proposed the modification of this language here, that it would go along with the business and not the owners. Because another thing that Camping World doesn't have control over is the properties under ownership of Coats, the former Coats and the private Coats ownership. They could potentially sell the properties for a real estate investment. And Camping World could continue their business as it is today with a different owner and keep their lease going. And that lease would transfer to the new owner. And they don't have control over that. So that's the reason why they need this to go along with the business and not the actual property owner. So it's just a south property, and that's the way that it would go. The developer agreement, the stormwater management maintenance agreement, that all goes along with the property, as Attorney Bill mentioned, similar to an easement. If you sell a property, you don't have to get all of your easement documents re-signed with the new owners of the property. They go along entitled with that property. So the key here to protect the city is that if Camping World terminates or ceases their business, then this IUP expires or terminates. Any questions on that?
This is Janet. I do have one other question. So are you able to speak to the length of the lease? And are they the same date and date? Because what I thought I had as you were speaking is, well, maybe the IUP end date is then synced up with your lease end date.
Unfortunately, Janet, I do not have that information.
I'm just, so this is Janet again, speaking to Bill. I mean, that would be one option that would, I think, address at least one concern that you have. Because you'd have to renew the lease to continue operations as you are right now. So if you had the IUP mirror that lease date, then you're satisfying my concern about not having an end date, which we have had with all of our other IUPs. And I think, you know, it would just, it would make sense with the fact that you'd have to renew your lease to continue operating as you do today anyway.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Haglund, that's exactly how the billboards were set up when they were on interim use permits. The underlying rights were 20 years to match the term of the interim use permit. It would require that we do some further investigation before you can act on this because we wouldn't want to have that kind of an open-ended question tonight.
Mr. Mayor, Grant DuCoches with Excel. I would say to that, I understand the concern from the council on that. I would say that if the lease is not renewed, then the business ceases, and then the IUP is terminated.
There were very few Jewish witnesses. Any wish to talk for longer went without, too, because the Holocaust wasn't the subject of the trial. So it wasn't spoken of.
Not talking, no.
Was comment out of the Auschwitz camp from May 1940 to November 1943.
Hello?
British sir, and transferred to Nuremberg, where he appeared as a witness.
I think Jesse needs that mute.
Doesn't sound like it's from Minnesota.
Can you mute Jesse?
Is it Jesse Carter?
Yeah, I think, I don't see the mute by him.
Well, I think what we need, Mr. Mayor, this is Bill Griffith, city attorney. I think what we need is, if there's a consensus, the council wants to hold this over to learn what the lease term is on the adjacent lot. We can do that. You can approve it as presented, or you can turn it down. I mean, those are your options.
Is there anybody on the council? I know Janet brings up the IUP and having IUP. Anybody else want to add anything to that idea?
This is Jenny, Mr. Mayor. One question. We have a compliance officer now. And so I know a lot of the concern is around compliance, correct? If I'm understanding. And I know that our compliance officers had some involvement in working on this. So would that somewhat suffice the concern that we have?
This is Janet. That does. But the second thing is just consistency with how we've handled all of our other IUPs and that we've, as far as I know, have not had an IUP with an open-ended date.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Bill Griffith again. That is correct. That's my understanding that all interim use permits issued so far in the city have had been for a term of years. Five, sometimes 10, and in the case of billboards, 20.
So I, this is Janet. I would move to hold this over to get more information about the lease date. It may be that, once we find that out, that's not a viable option either. But at least I think I'd feel better if we could investigate whether that's a possibility. So holding it over is my motion.
This is Ron. I'll second that motion. Just to clarify, just to clean this thing up. You're just talking about, if I'm right, on this motion that you're making, to clarify the IUP.
This is Janet. So I'm saying, we won't take action on this until staff or Bill comes back and says, here's the terms of the lease. You know, it's 10 years, five years, 50 years, whatever it is. And then we can weigh in whether or not trying to sync up an IUP with that, IUP end date with that makes sense. It may not. Then we go back to whether or not we want to end date at all. But, I mean, I don't want to create hardship for Camping World. So I understand what Grant had shared with us. And he doesn't know the date of the lease. So I feel like we can't really investigate that as an option without knowing that.
Did I just, this is Ron. Did I just second this motion?
Yes.
I'd like to rescind the motion only for the idea. I'd like to understand if everybody on the council or their views on having it connected. I have an IUP that's not open-ended. I know, I see where you're coming from on yours, but nobody's talked about the IUP here unless I missed it. Like what your views are on it? Leaving it open or?
Mr. Mayor, this is Rob. I get what Janet's saying. We typically put a set amount of years, like five, 10, 20. So this is left open-ended. So to me, with Janet there is if we don't put an end date on it, that could just go forever, right? It's an interim use permit with no end date.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Bill Griffith. Yes, that's correct. The way this is written, as long as the business is operating, the interim use permit would continue to.
And looking at it, this is Rob again, Mayor. And looking at it, if these are two separate parcels, and the northerly parcel decides to sell off and decide they don't want to do business with them anymore, they can still operate this business on the southerly lot for as long as they want without an end date?
No, that is.
That is not the case?
Not the case.
It is not the case.
Okay. I guess then it's kind of a mute point, right? Or not?
Yeah. So the idea is that as long as that business is operating, the business is operating on the property, the main parcel, the storage lot would go along with it. If that ceases, then the storage lot goes away.
Gotcha.
But this is Janet. But what you just said could happen, right? If the southerly lot gets sold, they could continue to lease the former Coats lot and continue to, as long as they could squeeze as many units as they needed to onto that, which is what the problem was before, is there was, they tried to put more in there than they needed to. And to your point, I mean, my other concern is, and I harp on this a lot. I like things to be consistent. Because if you leave this open-ended, then the next person who wants an IUP for whatever is like, well, you didn't put an end date on theirs. Why do you have to put an end date on ours? And we have put an end date on every single IUP, as far as I know, that this city has issued. Five years, 10 years. I mean, it isn't the same for all of them, but we have put an end date on it. So I'm not convinced that there's a good enough reason that we couldn't. that there's a good enough reason that we couldn't come up with an end date that doesn't create hardship for the applicant.
Any other comments? You want to restate your motion then again?
Well, my motion still stands. It's yours that you took away.
Okay. Well, then I second the motion by Janet Haglund. Any other comments? Any questions? Does staff understand where we're going?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I, I just have a, a quick comment here. As we vote on the motion, I, I would also keep in mind that I am thinking back to the planning commission. I believe, you know, they became compliant early on their screening, quite early. So they're making the attempt in good faith to be compliant. As I go back to the planning commission, I believe they also, as a result of this, hooked up to city utilities finally. So they, they went ahead and did that as well. So they have been taking, been participating actively in, in trying to be compliant. So.
Okay. Well, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. We'll take a vote on it. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Scott, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. So this will get cleared up then and brought back to us.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Bill Griffith, I expect it to be brought back to you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Grant.
I've been jumping around, well. What happened to Paul Birdsall that was on there? Is he still on there?
No.
No. He disappeared? Okay, we'll go on the Northwest Quadrant Preliminary and Final Plat Approval, page is 22 dash 40. Jack?
The City of Columbus is applying for a preliminary and final plat application to split two existing lots consisting of 32.85 acres to create three new lots and five outlots. The property is the Northwest Quadrant of the corner of Lake Drive and West Freeway Drive. It should be instead of Interstate 35. One of the existing lots is currently owned by the City of Columbus, while the other is currently owned by Steve and Patricia Saunders, who have agreed to be part of this plat process. Block 2, Lot 1 would be a separation of approximately six developable acres from a larger 27-acre area that is wetlands. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for the preliminary and final plat on May 21st, 2025. No public comments were received. At the following Planning Commission meeting on June 4th, 2025, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended the approval of the Northwest Quad I-35 Preliminary and Final Plat based on the findings and contingent on the recommendations outlined in the staff report. Approval of this plat will allow the city to proceed with the rezoning of Block 2, Lot 1 from general commercial to mixed-use high-density. The zoning classification will allow more opportunities to market this city-owned property for uses that align with the development division for the I-35 Lake Drive interchange area. Staff recommends the city council consider approval of the preliminary and final plat for the Northwest Quad.
Thank you, Jack.
And one, one notation in your packet, there are two plats that are shown, the preliminary and the one below it just says Northwest Quad. That's the final. They're both identical. There's no changes in either one of them. There were some survey errors that were corrected and these were done before the planning commission's recommendations. So everything is current and to date with that. It also has the approval of the other private property owner that's associated with this request.
Any comments by the council?
Yeah, this is Rob, Mayor. Not being listened to the planning commission last week, what, what is the purpose for this? Is there, is there something that's proposed that we're splitting this up for? Is it to be easily marketable?
Well, it's been on, this has been a discussion for quite a while. One of the things that we want to do is split the very northeast corner where the cursor is there, a separate lot. It is developable. That's the only developable piece of property that's left on that side of West Freeway Drive. That's a six-acre tract. If we do that, we're going to have another site the city can sell. The remainder of that tract outlined in yellow down to the road is wet. That's a site that we will retain for perhaps future use and some discussions with DNR. That would give us a six-acre site we could market for mixed-use high-density. That's their goal, rezonate to that classification, which could be used for apartment high-density senior housing, things of that nature. Currently, it's zoned general commercial, but because of its location, even though it is almost fronting the interstate, it's too difficult to get to in terms of access to be a real attractive site for retail, professional, or other personal services type businesses. That's one of the reasons we'd like to do that. The other thing is too, when we sell the property south of there, the city-owned property is adjacent to Mr. Saunders' property. This needs to be part of that plat.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I can add one little bit of history. Going back almost two years, the city applied for a grant for some of the costs of this plat. And the idea was to make it shovel-ready so that it would be easier to sell the, the various pieces that the administrator has outlined.
Thank you.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Oh, I thought maybe anybody else have any of these questions or comments? You can make the motion.
All right. So this is Janet. I move to approve the Northwest Quad Preliminary and Final Plat as exhibited in the staff report attachment materials for this item.
It's Rob, I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussions, questions? Having none, we'll take a vote. Rob, you want to go first?
Yeah, Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Scott, aye.
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye. We'll go on to item number five, which is AI Use Policies, pages 44, 41 to 44. Jack, you going to talk about this or?
No, this one, we'll turn this one over to Aaron Berg.
Okay, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the May 6th, 2025 City Council Workshop, staff presented an overview of the exploratory use of generative artificial intelligence in city operations with an initial focus on preparation for city council meeting minutes. At the May 28th, 2025 City Council meeting, staff presented an update and asked for direction on the adoption of its expanded use. Staff were directed to bring back a draft city policy for discussion. At the June 6th, 2025 City Council Workshop meeting, staff presented a draft policy for review and recommendation. At the conclusion of the workshop meeting, the draft policy was edited based on feedback. Staff recommends the city council review and adopt Policy 25 dash O2, the use of generative artificial intelligence in city operations.
Why do you always look at me first?
Well, I always go to the left.
Oh, okay. So this is Janet. Thank you for making those edits that, that we requested. I, this, I like this version a lot better. I do have two other edits and then just a question. So I'm looking on page 43, where at the top, under authorized use, the last sentence where it says use of generative AI outside of approved purposes must be reviewed by the city administrator or designee. I would just add and approved. So reviewed and approved. And then my second edit or question is under restrictions. It's the 123/4th bullet down. So one of the, one of the concerns that I brought up last time was how do you make sure that staff will review the, the AI-generated document minutes, whatever they happen to be? Because there's been several recent news articles about big media companies that have had things put out by AI that have been like completely wrong. Lists of bestseller books that don't exist, list of whatever. And so obviously whoever was responsible for reviewing that before it got released didn't do that. They, they leaned on it. And I didn't see, it says that they have to be verified to be accurate and factually correct. So one thought I had was to really drive this point home is, could you have a sign-off by whoever did that on the document, like reviewed and verified as correct by Aaron Berg? And then that way, I think when people have to sign off on something, they might feel more ownership to make sure that it's right. And that would address my concern.
So if you, if you look at the, the lack of depth of the policy, this has really been modified from its original version. And it's really, what I would say, has probably watered down to be very generic to protect the city. In this case, we are not recommending restricted use with a enterprise or a team account, which we would hold proprietary data. What this policy does is it allows for staff to use open source information because the, all of the data that this policy is designated for is public data. There's no reason to have it proprietary because as soon as we, for, for the case of minutes, the minute we put them on the website as published, OpenAI is going to utilize that to create other outputs for other entities using OpenAI as well as us. So this doesn't allow for use beyond anything that's public data. So if you look at the training portion, I have researched the League of Minnesota Cities and they have their own memo on the use of AI, which I did share with you guys in past meetings. We also have an annual cybersecurity case training that we are required by the League of Minnesota's Insurance Trust to complete and sign off every year, which is part of our annual audit. There are also five member learned courses on the League of Minnesota Cities on data practices and data privacy. So initially, when we would get a new employee or all employees would take those five initial training courses, we would verify that through their completion certificates. Annually, after that, they would still be continued to do the cybersecurity course as, as we already require them to do. But we would also have a sign-off that they've reviewed the league's memo and they've reviewed our city policy on the use of AI. So those are assurances that staff are not going to use it for anything but public data. And then we've linked the policy in here that any violation will result in discipline under the city's existing disciplinary policy. I think this generally protects the city from the use of AI and private or proprietary information. Should a, should a staff member do that, we have leverages in place to handle that through the discipline process.
So this is Janet. I, I, that really wasn't my concern. So all of what you said, I'm glad, I'm glad that you have those in place. But my, what I wanted to do is to make sure that regardless of, you know, if it's next week or two years from now, whoever's, and I'm thinking, of course, of minutes, whoever's signing off on this, giving it to the council to approve, has to sign off that they reviewed, they reviewed and found the AI version accurate. Pick whatever words you want, right? Because I think that really, if someone's stressed for time, I think they'd be very unlikely to sign that unless they actually did that. And I know that sometimes people do a quick review because they've got a million things to do and, you know. So I, I just am suggesting, and we do that currently with our minutes. Whoever generated it signs that they generated the minutes. So, so maybe that's not even any different than what happens now. It's just instead of saying that they generated it, they would say that they reviewed it for accuracy or whatever word.
So the disclaimer, if you will, that I've suggested since day one, we started exploring this, is that that includes in the disclaimer that this was generated with the assistance of AI with human oversight and review. That's all part of the disclaimer. So if I.
Yeah. I just want, I want the human to write that they, I want the human's name on there, just like there is now. Right now, when you get it, it says it was generated by Daniel Peacock or it was generated by. So I'm just suggesting that they continue to sign, whoever's responsible is continuing, is continuing to sign off that, you know, this is, this is verified by their review. That's all. I, you know, if you guys are generating something internally that's never going to, you know, reach us, I don't care how you do it internally. And I think all the other checks and balances that you have in here are great. So I don't have any other concerns. I just, that, that was my one suggestion. So I would just suggest those two edits.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, this is Scott. Kind of in the same vein of restrictions, in the third line down, it ends basically that, well, I'll just read it. Staff must not use AI tools for decision-making that impacts individual right, benefit, or obligations without human review. My question would be probably a pretty simple question is what constitutes human review? Is this, somebody's just sitting reviewing the AI version and, and signing off on it? Or is there a SOP or some process that we're following that would constitute, constitute human review? I mean, I would hate to think somebody's trying to multitask and not paying full attention and therefore the level of human review is subjective.
Yeah. And that is something that we collectively as a staff are going to have to define as to, are, are we confident that this has been reviewed before we publish? Now, I guess my question back to the council is, I use AI to generate all of the meeting announcements that go out on our social media page. Literally, it's a header for Columbus City Council meeting, this date, this time, and our website. Like, I don't know that that needs maximum human review and a sign-off. Or if I'm using AI to clean up language in a job description because the sentence is a run-on and I can't quite figure out how to make it work grammatically correct. I can copy and paste that into AI and it will generate me a grammatically correct sentence using the items that I want. And then I can copy and paste that into the job description as a grammatically correct sentence. I don't know that we need a sign-off on that either. But I understand the, the desire to have that review on items that you're going to approve and/or we publish as an official document. I understand that.
Yeah, this is Scott again. But again, what, what would constitute human review? Am I overthinking this? Or is there something we need to add to that as to what human review is?
Well, the, the, the following item down, AI-generated information used for city work must be verified to be accurate and factually correct. That's the person doing it. They better be reviewing it for accuracy and correctness.
And that's where, excuse me, this is Janet, that's where I would add that, and, and whoever's doing it would sign off that they did that. They did those steps. They completed those steps.
This is Jenny. Can I clarify? You'll have a person creating the document, for example, maybe Aaron, who's putting that initial document together, and then we have that go on after that. So would that sign-off be at the end? Or would it be in, would it be who created the document? Because there, I mean, you also want to almost verify who created the document because some of these edits are very small. And so I feel like it, maybe, I'm not trying to overcomplicate it either, but I want to clarify what that looks like.
So this is Janet. My intent is that the final document that goes out for review is what gets signed off on. You know, if, if the process is that right now Aaron is the expert in this, so Aaron generates the, you know, the document, looks at it, and then hands it off to another staff person to review it before it goes to us, then the person who reviewed it would sign off on it because the document's being generated by AI. Yes, it'll be generated by AI based on the inputs that Aaron or somebody else gave them. And there may be an iterative process back and forth in order to get to the end product. All I care about is that somebody, and I All I care about is that somebody, and again, I'm thinking more about minutes and I'm thinking about it in the context of what's been in the news lately is that it's really easy to assume that this is infallible. You know, it's a computer, it's gonna, it's, you know, whatever. And if you get strapped for time or you're, you know, whatever the reason is, you just say, I'm sure it's good because the last 10 that I've looked at have been perfect and you send it out. Are we going to be that careful about looking at it? I mean, I just want to make sure that somebody is making sure that AI didn't make something up. And we've already had some examples of AI making something up on these draft minutes. So that's, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
And my response to that would be there's seven people with oversight. The original creator, the city administrator, and then all five of you before anything is approved. So I, I don't know where the final oversight signature needs to come from. If I'm generating the minutes and I sign off that I generated, I respectfully submit these.
Mm-hmm.
Then the buck stops with me. I'm the one that did it.
That, and that's what I'm asking for. Who, I mean, whoever you guys decide the buck stops with is the person who puts their name on the end of it that says, we've done the best job we can to make sure that there's no factual errors in this.
And if I fail to review them and they are not accurate and not factual, then we have a disciplinary policy that we put into place and that we utilize.
And.
Errors aren't, are not capable, are, we're not accepting those. And if it continues, we're going to disallow your use of AI. I don't think we're going to stop it, right? And so this policy is more general in terms of protecting the city in the release of private and protected data that shouldn't be out there. This isn't specific to minutes. This is specific to complete operations across the city.
Yep.
And if we, if we drill down minutes specifically into a procedure, we can get into the sign offs if you want to. But this is just covering up for general operations.
Yeah. Mayor, this is Scott. So you just defined what human review is to me when you said it's being reviewed by seven people. And I guess my recommendation was you put that right in here and, and what human review is it's being reviewed by staff members so-and-so, so-and-so by title and five council members. That's the human review.
This is Janet. That's going to change depending on what it's being used to generate for. I mean, and I think that's why, what I was getting is I don't want to make this, right now we have a, and again, I'm using minutes as a process, but, or as an example, but, you know, you have a process, whoever generates the minutes, you know, before it comes to us, it gets reviewed by however many people, I don't know. I mean, sometimes it's five or six or whatever. But they don't all sign it. The person who is ready to pass it on to us to say, here's your minutes, is the person who signs off on it. And all I'm trying to control for is a laxity that might happen. I think everybody knows that humans can make mistakes, but it's really easy to think computers can't. And I, and there's been big, you know, big errors made by big companies for this very reason. So I don't think that we are immune from that, from that. That's all. And I just think that by, you know, years ago, when I worked in, in a medical laboratory and we had procedures, we signed everything that we did. We put our name on everything to make sure that it was our, our rear end on the line if that result wasn't accurate or if we said we read a procedure and we didn't follow it. And it really made, you, you read it. You made sure it was because that was your name on it. That's all I'm saying.
So the goal, this is Ron. So the goal is to find out who okayed it.
I don't, I'm not finding it out. I'm saying the, the act of putting your name on it makes you more, makes you, you more accountable to yourself for reading it. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not doing this to say so we can point the finger at so-and-so and say, well, look, they've done five different things. I mean, that might be what you do behind the scenes with your disciplinary process. That's not our business. But, you know, I just think it's, it's human nature that if you're signing off on something, you're more careful about making sure it's, you read it and it's, and it's true. So this is Janet. You look, I can see that you're not happy with this suggestion, so maybe you can help me understand why.
I think we're overcomplicating it. This is really to protect the city. If, if an employee works outside of the bounds of this, then, then they're eligible for discipline. Our discipline process would take effect and that would be where we would address those issues of inaccuracies on factual information, putting the city in a position of liability. So again, regardless of whether someone's here humanly dictating, they could still also submit inaccurate information, which you guys then would upon review have to correct. But we're not going to go back and tell the person who dictated minutes that what they submitted was inaccurate. It's a draft for a reason.
So, so again, using the minute, this is Janet, the minutes for an example, we have people sign off on them already now. Why is that, why is this different? The person who's, the last person whose hands they leave before they come into ours is the person who signs off on it. So why is what I'm suggesting any different?
It's already being signed off.
By AI.
By the person who did it. The person who did the review has to acknowledge by, respectfully submitted by Secretary so-and-so.
Perfect. And that's what I, that's all I'm asking for. I just didn't want there to be the statement that says it's been generated by AI, end of sentence.
No. And that disclaimer goes after their signature to let the public know that there was artificial intelligence used in the assistance of this creation. However, it has been reviewed by humans for accuracy, lack of bias, whatever the disclaimer that I wrote that with the assistance of the, the league's process and the National League of Cities, the disclaimer came from there.
So I think we're saying the same thing. I mean, I think we're agreeing. All I'm saying is that in your policy, because I think it's important to have things spelled out in policy because who knows, you know, five years from now, who's going to be reading this? That you, that there is a sign off on there. That's all. And if you want to say specifically for minutes, because that's obviously where my head is at, so that you're not having to do this for every darn thing you generate internally, that's fine with me. I mean, if we get a policy, I'm assuming that Jack is the person that we hold accountable or the city administrator, or if it's your policy, I mean, I don't need to see that.
So it sounds to me like we're talking about a procedure versus a policy. The procedure for generating minutes would have X, Y, Z steps to it. The policy is this is conduct, this is what we expect, this is what we don't expect, if this, this.
Yep.
Procedure would be.
I know the difference, but oftentimes, first of all, it's unusual for us to have anything written down, which I know you know that. So oftentimes we combine policies and procedures together into one document unless there's a real reason to have a separate step-by-step procedure. So if you, if you intend to have a separate written procedure for this, then I agree with you, you don't need to put this in there. Is that the intent?
Yes. Yeah. Once we identify that this is acceptable use and we define the best way to go from the video to, through AI to human review to create minutes, to sign them off, to pass them off.
Okay.
Once, once these, these are all approved, we will then define the procedure and the expectations.
And I'm cool.
Yeah. This is Scott. That's exactly what I was asking for was the procedure.
I'm assuming you were combining them, so.
And then we have the protections of the annual training and the requirement sign off as a part of employment to know the difference between what's protected data, what's private data, what's public data on top of our protections with the disciplinary process.
So do we have, this is Ron. Do we have to rewrite this motion or rewrite?
Nope.
Would you going to approve it right now?
I, I'll, I'll do the motion.
Okay.
So then this is Janet. I move to approve the AI use policy as presented in our packet. But I will also add contingent on a separate procedure being drafted after enough uses, you know, enough experience has been gained to, to be able to accurately draft that procedure.
Scott, I'll second.
We got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Scott, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, nay.
Ron, aye. Go on to item number D, consultant liaison and staff reports. City engineer isn't here tonight?
No.
City attorney, Bill's here.
Mr. Mayor, council members, just one update from the legislative session. While a bonding bill was put together late in the process, it did not contain local earmarks. So it was a very much a stripped-down bonding bill. In lieu of some of the local earmarks, the transportation appropriation includes $47 million of new local road improvement program funds. And we'll just pass out this, it's a one-page memo, so I didn't pass it out earlier. But what that means is we have the opportunity, as we have previously, to apply for LRIP money for that stretch of Hornsby, North Hornsby, that would have been in our bonding request. It will likely be competitive, but with $47 million added to the kitty, it makes the competition a little less tight. So there's an emphasis on shovel-ready projects. And so our project is essentially that. I confirmed with the administrator that we had worked on the wetland credits. I believe those are now in place for our project. So that, that then makes it shovel-ready because I believe the engineer has plans, has a scope of work and would be ready to bid that project in short order. What we would like is, Margaret Vessel would like to work with the CAs, the, the staff for Senator Kuhn and Senator West to see what we can do to advance our project so that it's at least well scoped and ready to go when it goes in for application. So we would do a little bit more work on our, with our public affairs group to see if we can position that application for, for approval.
Do we know the, this is Janet, do we know the deadline for the application?
They haven't even set it, set it up yet. They just, they just literally, this is hot off the presses. So, but we will, we will come back in, in future meetings and let you know the status.
Okay.
When the, when it opens, what the deadlines are and what some of the criteria will be. So a little bit of bad news, a little bit of good news, a little, maybe, I think they were trying to ameliorate all of the local ass with some additional funds in that transportation budget.
I got a question, Bill. This is Ron. Is this something that we can politic on or is it just?
It's a little less political than, you know, putting together a bonding bill, which is the ultimate political exercise since they need a super majority. And so definitely I, you know, I want to be able to check in with our, our legislative delegation to see what they can do to help us. But ultimately it will go into MINDOT, be scored based upon the criteria they establish and then awarded by MINDOT.
So this is Janet. So similar to other LRIP grants that we've done? Okay.
And as you may remember, a year ago, maybe not quite a year ago, there was about four times as many requests for dollars as dollars. And so I think this is an attempt to address that by providing more dollars to transportation, local, local improvements.
Well, we're always on the edge, aren't we?
We can feel it. It's a wisp away.
So close, so close.
Well, we were, we were in, we were in one of the, the bills, the draft bills. It's just the bonding bill was literally put together in the last week.
So we got a chance.
Yes.
Any other good news?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Where are we here? Hey, council reports. Jenny, you have anything?
Oh, I've got a few things. This is Jenny. Coon Creek had a watershed meeting on 6/9, which was this past Monday, a little bit of a technology glitch. And so they had a newer employee and so not super Zoom familiar and so they had some issues with that. But updates on that, that there were nothing, nothing of major concern or question for Columbus. There is a new potential residential area going in with 107 houses at Lexington and Bunker, which is close and may impact us a bit in terms of traffic. But that was the only thing of major, major question relating to Columbus. Fall Fest will have some updates over the summer. I should have more in July. But so far, everything is planned and on track with running Aces and for Saturday. So keeping that Friday, September 19th and 20th on your radar. And then I will have one question for Councilmember Haglen relating to Rice Creek. I saw that there was a note about mini-grants, potential mini-grants that they had posted on, I think it was Facebook that I saw, for anyone within Anoka County, within Rice Creek, that they could request funds for rain or pollinator gardens. And so it showed that that was open. So I didn't know if that would be something you would talk about, but I did notice that.
Okay. No, I, I, so this is Janet. I, they actually had a workshop scheduled for Monday and they canceled it. And I don't know, I think that might've been on the agenda, but they do have those periodically. They come in, I think through Bowser. So they're not the only ones. I think all of the watershed districts have access to those. So it's, I mean, if you want to do it, it's a nice financial help to put one of those in. It's good.
This is Jenny. I just know that a lot of our residents have become more conscious of planting wildflowers. And I'm in Coon Creek and/or with, on that watershed or relaying information on that watershed and we don't have as many residents impacted by that. They also have it. But I thought with Rice Creek, because we have more residents impacted by that, that it was at least something to note for them. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Jenny. Scott?
Thank you. June 24th at 4:00 PM will be the Forest Lake Cable Commission meeting. And I also want to give Jack and our code compliance officer a shout out. Had a couple complaints from the neighborhood about a blight-type condition that they're working on right now. And it appears that it's been taken care of. So you've got the appreciation of a couple of citizens from, from the city for acting on that so quickly. That's all I have.
Thank you. Janet?
So this is Janet. I have a couple of things besides what I'm going to talk about under the Personnel Committee report. So last Thursday, the Sunrise WMO also had a meeting. We talked a bit about a couple of projects that they're doing. One just is getting wrapped up and that was a rain garden that was installed on the, on East Front Boulevard on Coon Lake. And so they were just planting, doing the plantings, I think it was this week actually. And then that one is done in Dunaway Construction was the contractor that put that in. So that was kind of nice that we got some local business out of that. And then the second is they're out, they're put out for construction bids for the shoreline stabilization project, which is a Bowser grant that they got. And I think if I remember correctly, it's on Martin Lake. So that's a fairly large grant. I think over a, a number of years, they'll be taking applications from people who have lake shore on Martin Lake. And I don't think Coon Lake is part of it. It's, uh...
Lynnwood Lake.
Yeah. Those two, I think, are the ones that are eligible for that. And our next meeting is on September 4th. And then the other piece of good news that we had today, this week, is Jack called a meeting with MidCo yesterday, actually, to find out where we were at with the construction of, you know, laying the last lines of broadband in, in the city of Columbus to complete the, the high-speed internet project that we started six years ago. There's 100, about 117, between 117 and 120 properties that would be updated. And what we were told is that they are in the design phase right now. They're wrapping that up and expect to start construction probably around mid-July. And it will have it done by the end of this year, which is a year ahead of when they were talking about getting it done. So they really pushed our project up early. We have a list of what addresses will be impacted by this. So I know I've had a couple of residents reach out to me wondering whether or not they were in, in the, on the list and they were. But I think Jack and staff will be working with MidCo to put out some communication so that the neighborhoods that are going to be impacted will, will know when it's going to happen and know when they can sign up for high-speed internet if that's what they, they choose to do. But, and this will be the last piece. We will have 100% of our city covered after this is done, so pretty happy about that. That's it for me.
Rob?
I'll report, Mayor.
I don't really have a report, but I'm sure that everybody noticed that if you go down the crossways and Lake Drive, that light's on now, the street light. So it really lights it up. And Jack, I don't know, they just started cutting ditches today? Or has that been going on?
It's been going on for just a little while. You know, there's a restriction on mowing ditches in April and May because of the pheasant breeding grounds. So it's been going on for a couple of days. They've just started that process.
Looks nice. Well, I guess Tim's, Tim's doing most of that. Yeah, very good. City administrators' report?
No, Personnel Committee.
What?
Personnel Committee report. We got a whole bunch of stuff to talk about.
Yeah, I know, but it doesn't have it on this.
Doesn't it?
It's underneath.
Yeah, it's right there.
Six, or four, seven. D4.
Oh, way up there, okay. Sorry, apologize.
It's all right.
All right, we'll go to Personnel Committee report.
All right.
First, Jack, sorry.
It's okay.
What's that? Yeah, before I do this, I also want to just add one more thing to council. Thank you very much, Aaron, for putting those beautiful flowers out in front of our door. He went out and went to Waldox this morning and picked those up himself and hung them, and they're gorgeous. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the first, first item of business is planning commissioner appointments. So in the report that I sent out, I had mentioned that the dates that we had solicited applications to be on the planning commission and, excuse me, that we had planned to do our interviews this week, and we did those. There were three applications that were received, and we extended an invite to interview to all three of those applicants. One subsequently withdrew their application, so we interviewed two people, one yesterday, one today. The first person I'm going to talk about is a resident, Michael Oswald. He, I'm going to grab my notes here. He's been a resident in Columbus since last September. He moved here from Lynwood, not Lynwood. Why am I thinking?
Lindstrom.
Lindstrom, thank you. Lindstrom, where he was a resident for about six years. He's a volunteer firefighter in the Citrus City of Center City. He has also been an election judge here in Columbus. He's newly retired, and so feels like he has some capacity to even do more volunteer work and is really interested in serving on the planning commission. He has a bachelor's degree in finance and extensive knowledge in the real estate field. He's worked in various different capacities in that area, both in the private sector and also with the VA. So he's used to dealing with property. He is, let's see, let's see if there's anything else. Yep, September 2030, moved here from Lindstrom. He loves it here. It's, it's really interesting, when you talk to people who interview for the planning commission, one of the things that seems to be a very common sentiment is that they moved here from somewhere, not really expecting to like it very much, and they love it and they never want to leave. So it's kind of nice that those are the folks that want to serve on our planning commission. Anyway, he, he's, I think, would be a really great candidate. And he definitely has the time and the commitment to do this. And even said that, you know, if there's a conflict with his volunteer firefighting duties, that it's probably time to give that up anyways. So he's going to make the time to, to be here at our meetings. Any questions? Then I would make the motion to approve the appointment of Michael Oswald to the City of Columbus Planning Commission to fill the remaining term of Bethany Jackson, which expires on December 31st, 2026.
This is Ron, I'll second that. We have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Any comments, any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Scott, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. Motion passes.
Yep, and our second candidate, we interviewed just a few hours ago. Her name is Ashley Seuss, and she lives, actually, in your neighborhood, in the Thirnbeck Preserve neighborhood on DePaul Street. So Ashley is fairly new to Columbus. She used to live in Lionel Lakes and moved here with her husband and her two children. She loves it here, never wants to leave. She actually, on her application, indicated that she was interested in all of our boards and committees. So we spent some time talking to her about what each of them did and, and, you know, where she thought her interests would lie. And after speaking with her and interviewing her, she, she decided that she really did want to serve on the planning commission. She works in sales and marketing, so that's her professional background. She does a lot of her work from home. And she is, readily admits that she does not have a lot of insight or experience with city planning, but she's excited to learn. And she really feels that having a fresh set of eyes from someone who's fairly new to the community would be, would be an asset. She's very energetic and positive, and she, I think she will bring a really, a high level of energy to, to that board. Any questions? Then I would, Janet, move to approve the appointment of Ashley Seuss in the, to the City of Columbus Planning Commission to fill the remaining term of Lynn Carver Quinn, which expires on December 31st, 2025.
This is Ron, I'll second that. We got a motion on the floor? Any questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Scott, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. The motion passes.
All right, moving on to my number two. You all received a copy of a draft compensation philosophy and also a draft resolution, so I'm just going to give you a little reminder of why we're doing this. You saw a presentation just a bit ago by Mark Goldberg from DDA. He presented to us on April 1st, kind of where we were at with our compensation study. And one of the things that I think we mentioned at that time is that the council should adopt a compensation philosophy, because then that helps guide the Personnel Committee and future councils as to what we consider to be the most important aspects of our compensation plan. And it, it will help us draft what you're going to see at the July workshop, hopefully close, as close as possible to what the sentiment of the, of the council is in terms of compensation. So for instance, you know, we're at the point now where Mark has gone through, you know, we identified which cities we thought we were most like, and there was, council weighed in on that. He's gone and done the salary surveys. We've updated all of our job descriptions. He scored all of those, so using their, their proprietary system. And so we're really kind of coming to the finish line, but there's, you know, there's still some questions out there, like, well, you know, if I age, the salary data that he's receiving from these cities is about a year and a half old. And so, you know, do I age that 3%, 2%? You know, what, what, how, how much do I inflate that for the fact that it's, it's a year, year and a half to two years old salary data? It's helpful for us if you can help us make sure that when we refer to the council in general and what they consider, you know, the most important aspects of our compensation plan and goals of the compensation plan, we can, we can take a stab at where we think those, what those answers should be. You will hear that when you get your, your presentation, but hopefully we'll be close to where, where you want to land. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions that you have on the, on the draft compensation philosophy. It's not a policy, it's really just trying to capture kind of where, where we're standing on this. And, and if there's edits, we can take those, those back. But then this is what we will hand back to Mark, and we will use to guide. Any questions that he has on, on sort of the final steps of this whole process?
Any questions?
This is Jenny. So just to clarify, obviously, this is the philosophy, but I know that we looked at different versions of what pay scales would look like, that would be in a future meeting to review that. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, what you're going to see at the December, oh, my December, good grief, July workshop is all of that detail. So you will get, you know, reminder of, like, here are the cities that we, we surveyed. If you want to, if you want to see all of the behind-the-scenes stuff, we talked about that yesterday, we'd be happy to pull it up, or you can sit down for a tutorial with Ellen or Aaron or any one of us, that we can walk you through all the different tables and, and inputs that, that have come out. But at the end of the day, what you'll have is, here's, here's our staff and our positions that we had scored. And some of the positions are positions that there isn't a person in right now, but we would expect, for instance, when we hired Eleanor, she was hired as a planning tech. She is now an assistant planner. So we think about what the promotional pathway is for that position. The next step up would be a planner position. So we have a job description, and that job description has been scored and has a salary range associated with it for both the position that she used to be in and the position that she would move up into in her next, in her next promotion, if she's still here when, when that happens. So there are some, some positions that we included, thinking that we would use them in the future, even though there, there isn't a person in there right now. And that was all part of the contract that we had with DDA to do that. So you'll, you'll get to see it all, as little or as much of it as you want. You'll also, I mean, you'll also be given at that meeting, you know, if we adopt this, these steps, these salary ranges, budgetary impact is X. So you'll know what the, what the hit is to the, to the bottom line of our budget by adopting this, and then you can adjust it accordingly.
Mrs. Jenny, thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
I'd just like to add a point here that, this is Ron, I did attend most of these meetings on this compensation, plus the interviews with the two candidates. So they were very good candidates, so glad they're coming on. Do you want to make a motion on this resolution? Any other comments or questions? Don't hear any?
So I will, I would, Janet, I move to approve the resolution, 2025-06, a resolution adopting a compensation philosophy for the City of Columbus. And that would be the philosophy as written in your packet.
And Ron, I'll second that. We have a motion on the floor. Seconded, any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Scott, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. Motion passes. But item number C?
Okay, so then the third thing is the City Administrator Annual Review. So when we hired Jack as our city administrator, his effective date, I'm trying to think, because we hired you as the interim also, but now we're talking about the real deal. His effective date was June 1st. So he's due, actually a little bit overdue, for his annual evaluation. What we realized is there is no information, notes, policies, procedures, there's no review, this is, we have never done, as far as I know, maybe never's too long, at least in the last six years and maybe the last 10 or 15 years, there hasn't been a review of the city administrator. I can tell you that in the past, that was because that was the wishes of the city administrator. So we didn't have any template, and we didn't have any roadmap for how to do this, and that was what prompted trying to write the city administrator policy, city administrator annual review policy that was put in front of you. I had our attorney's office review this, and there were some minor edits, and then they answered a couple of questions, which I will go over with, go over with you, too. So I think before I do that, though, I just want to ask if there's any specific questions on this document that anybody has, and give me time to find the notes that I wanted, clarify that we got from the attorneys.
This is Rob, was that in, in our packet?
It was emailed out, I think, Monday?
Monday.
Monday morning.
Do we have any extra copies here? Maybe you guys printed them out?
I'm printing one.
Grab one. So while we're waiting on that, let me just go over the two questions that I had for our city attorneys. The first one is, in doing the research on the policy, and the policy that we drafted is based on one that was published by the city of Northfield. So we basically took their, their template and kind of made it our own. I wanted to make sure that I was interpreting state statute correctly and that we could do the performance review in a closed session. And, and Bill confirmed that that is true. We can do it in a closed session. We cannot discuss compensation in the closed session, however. So there is a process that was outlined in here about how we intend to gather input from both the council members, as well as other board members, some residents, some business owners, and the staff. So it's like doing a 360 evaluation, if you've ever been part of that. That's, that's the intent. Ellen Hinrichs will be the person who's going to be leading that up and collecting that information, then generating the report that will then go to the council with an executive summary. In the, in the council meeting in that closed session, we'll discuss what's in that report. You will have an opportunity to determine whether or not there's additional information that you want to, you know, input, or whether you agree or disagree with what's written in that report. Jack is invited to participate in that session. The discussion that we have initially will be without him present, so that there's no, you know, concern about what you can or can't say. He's, he'll be invited to come back in if that's what he so chooses. If he decides that he doesn't want to do that, then Ellen and the mayor will communicate what the discussion was in that review. And we'll come up with a, with a evaluation of him, you know? And it'll generally be, you know, he meets, he doesn't meet, he, he exceeds expectations. Basically, that's what it'll boil down to. And then we, and you'll get information about the compensation side of it, and then that was my second question, because in Jack's employment contract, it says that he would be eligible for an annual cost of living raise, and then upon evaluation, a merit increase based on his, his performance. We don't have a policy for that either. So I, and I know that is part of the work that we've done with our compensation and salary survey. We, we have the city administrator position within the step system. So I thought, well, maybe, you know, if he exceeds, he moves two steps or one step, whatever, whatever the council would describe. But I wanted to make sure that that actually met the, the intent of the employment contract. And I think Megan weighed in on this and said, nope, don't do steps. You have to actually decide, you know, if he deserves a merit increase. And so we're going to have to figure that piece out. And so I'm going to throw that open right now, if you have any ideas about, you know, how, how the council might define what a merit increase for a city administrator would be. Not the amount, just basically, like, you know, if you're, if you're, if, if the agreement is that based on all the input and the council's receipt of that input, that, you know, the city administrator is exceeding expectations, would you want to give a merit increase of that? And if so, how would you decide how much that should be? If they meet expectations, does that, does that generate a merit increase? And if so, how would you decide that that would be? And I'm just getting that, because we'll, we'll, we'll try to put something together for you to respond to, but I just, because there is no precedent for this, and we don't have a merit system for our existing staff, I'm throwing it out there to see if you have any ideas.
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, Bill Griffith. I'll just read the section that's applicable from the employment contract. Merit-based increases reflective of performance metrics drafted by the council, and that's Councilmember Haglund's point, that that doesn't exist, shall be considered at the discretion of the council. That's the key.
And I didn't mention this, but when, you know, when Jack was hired, there were goals that were established that, you know, that he needed to work on for the next year. You will have the results of where he's at with meeting those goals. And you obviously will have his job description. And within the job description, there's a whole bunch of tasks, which I don't think is, and Megan also spoke to this, is that's not typically what you would evaluate a city administrator against. It's more about meeting goals and competencies, and how they do on that. So, I'm just going to read you what Megan said is, you know, "The goal of the agreement and those that is crafted and inspired, that it is crafted from and inspired by is for the council to determine if the administrator is meeting the goals the council has set for him. Recognizing that the city administrators, a job description and a performance can vary based on the issues that are presented over the course of a council term, as compared to a more junior employee that has very clear expectations that can be analyzed through the lens of that job description." So, basically, what she's saying is, don't talk about whether or not he puts together, you know, good agendas for the council meetings. I mean, you can obviously speak to that, but that's not what he's being evaluated on. He's being evaluated on his decision-making, his leadership, and the goals that we defined for him to aspire to in the next, in that following year. So, at the end of the day, we're going to come to a consensus as to how he did according to those goals and those competencies. And my question is, then, you know, do you, how do you deal with the merit part of it? Do you have any ideas? And if you don't, that's fine, too. I mean, but our goal is to try to, is to try to get the tools that we're going to use to assess feedback from the stakeholders out in the next week or so. And then, we'll start collecting the data. And we would be shooting for the last council meeting in June for doing the review, because that will put us just a little bit outside of the goal of having this done within five weeks of the annual, or four weeks of the annual review.
This is Jenny. Just to clarify, so, I scoured the internet for four or five hours, looking at various cities throughout Minnesota for comparables, because I felt that this is very detailed, and it's very important, and I appreciate the work that was done on this. I did also find the City of Northfield.
Yeah, that looks familiar, doesn't it?
Right, I mean, very verbatim, very close. My only question, before we get into how we define that compensation, links back to that part number two on the second page, that goes into the performance evaluation. Again, there are very few and far between in terms of what other cities had to offer, in terms of what this looks like for their city administrator. I don't even know that many cities actually have a formal review process for their administrator, like we are planning and proposing. But I, my question would be, this part two, and I can read it if you'd like, but it basically goes over having three to five residents selected, having two to three businesses, and doing this annually. My question would be, would it make more sense to have a detailed review that includes multiple residents, multiple businesses, in that third year as their contract is expiring, and do a more informal process that links more to our city staff and our council and potentially our commissions in years one and two? I guess my question just goes into the, how detailed this performance review is, because by the time it's put together, it could be a few months, and then, all of a sudden, we're looking to the next year already. And how much have we, has he gotten out of that? Not just Jack, but anyone in the future gotten out of that, because it's so detailed. And not saying anything against the detail, but feeling that that may be a good fit for that third year as we're going to renew a contract.
So, that's certainly one way we could do it. I think that the reason that we selected the stakeholders that we did is because we kind of adopted the model of a 360. So, you think about someone that's in a position, a high-ranking position like a city administrator, and you think, well, they have management responsibilities, so getting feedback from either their direct reports or all of the city staff would be important. Obviously, they're going to get evaluated by the council. But they also have a lot of influence over the city boards. And so, you know, asking the planning commissioners, the two non-council EDA members to weigh in, we thought was appropriate, too. A big part of what we had stressed when we were recruiting for this position is that we have a certain culture here in Columbus, and the residents really like that culture, and so do the business owners. You know, it's a little bit more informal and open-door policy. And we really wanted a city administrator that would continue in that realm. So, I think the thought of touching bases with, you know, a handful of residents and a couple of businesses that had been here in the past year and had actually met with our city administrator for their feedback, to affirm that that has truly been their experience and get their, would be really helpful. And I think the reason for not putting it off till year three is because if the answer is, no, that wasn't their experience, you have an opportunity to correct that going forward. I don't anticipate that's going to happen. I mean, I talked to lots of people that have been in this, and they all love our city administrator and can say nothing but nice and very glowing things about it. So, I do not expect that we're going to hear bad things. But that would be the reason why we would do it, is in case there was a shift away from that. But this is your evaluation. So, if you're all feeling like, well, let's not do that, let's not do that till year three, that I can bring that back.
This is Jenny. One more point. If we do keep this, the two to three business owners that have worked with the city, I may request that we add a note that their experience with the council, because it may have been a very lengthy experience, or they may not have a positive review of what happened with the council, that they note that that is a separate experience than what they experienced with our administrator. Because I think people may convolute those two, and then, all of a sudden, our administrator would be suffering because of an experience with their council.
Yeah, and I think, you know, our intent is that these would be like face-to-face conversations with Ellen. So, I think that's a really good point that I can bring back, that she makes sure that they understand what it is that we're asking them to give us feedback on.
So, Mayor, this is Rob. Question on the, when we did the hiring process for the city administrator, it was all of the council? Is that possible for all of the council to do that review and not just the three on the personnel committee?
Oh, yes, you all are.
Oh, okay.
We would all, we would be doing-
I thought I was reading through, and it just said, council members serving on the personnel committee. And maybe I'm misreading it. Where is, what portion?
So, we would be looking at the, you know, on page three, where it's under five. It talks about, you know, how we would do that meeting. So, you don't have to read through this whole big, long document. I think it's the 25th, is it the 25th? That's the last, June 25th?
It does state that we would all have involved.
We would go into closed session. All five of us would be here. We would go over all of the information that, and Ellen would be here. She would give you all the feedback that she got. Obviously, you have your own experiences. You have his job description. You have what we're trying to, you know, what we're trying to evaluate him against. And then, we'll talk about it.
Okay, okay.
Yep, you're all part of it.
Any other comments?
No, thank you, Mayor.
So, I'm just saying, I mean, if you have, am I hearing that you're not sure what you want to do about the merit increase and the merit part of the compensation? Like, how do you want to decide what that should be? Because, again, it's a blank slate.
This is Jenny. I think, personal opinion would be that it'd obviously be tied in a good, better, best situation. So, depending on if we have ranking numbers, that that may associate with what that looks like.
Okay.
But I would need more detail as to what those ranking numbers would look like in order to better assess and give you detail as to how I feel that outlook, if that makes sense. I would want to see the document.
So, you'd rather that we come back to you with a suggestion? That's what I'm hearing, okay.
Yeah, or maybe, Rob, maybe even like a series of suggestions based on performance?
Okay, I can do that. I'm going to ask our city attorney, because, just because this is only like three weeks away, it's not very long. Is there a way to get feedback? I mean, I hate, I guess if someone like Ellen sent an email out to all of the council members with, here's some suggestions, give me your feedback on what you like. Are we still compliant with open meeting law? Because it's not an elected official that's contacting all of us. I mean, I kind of hate to have Jack send out the email that's about his compensation. It just feels a little weird to me. But could our consultant do that?
I believe so.
Or you guys could, too, I suppose. The attorney could.
Yeah, I was going to say, if the consultant just wants to use Megan as a bridge, and it's coming out from the attorney's office.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I'm following up with Ellen tomorrow morning on what we talked about, so we'll do that. We'll come up with some suggestions, and you'll get an email from probably Ellen and/or Megan with, and you can weigh in that way.
And just a calendar note, since we're doing every other meeting, Megan will be here at the next meeting.
Lucky her. She drew the short straw. All right, so then, did anybody have any other questions on this? You're okay with the process that we're putting forth? Okay. So, then, this is Janet. I would move to approve the city administrator performance review policy with the one addition that we will work with our HR consultant and city attorney to send out some suggested options for determining a merit increase.
This is Jenny. I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussions, any questions? Hearing none, Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Scott, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Ron, aye. Well, on to item number five, the planning commission report.
Guess what? That's me again. But I don't really have much to say on that, because we've already talked about the plat, and that was one of the things that they talked about. The only other thing that I would add is that Eleanor did a really nice job of updating the planning commission on some of the projects that they had heard about. And I thought, whoa, this would be really good information for the council to have, too, unless it's in your report, Jack. Was it in your report?
No.
Okay, so then, I would share it. So, one is that she talked about MTW Truck Wash, and they have gotten their SAC and their Race Creek Watershed issues all resolved, and our permits are all in place, and they'll be starting construction like anytime now. So, they'll be breaking ground, if they haven't already, very soon. The go-kart track fell through. No go-kart track in the freeway district.
That's the EDA report.
Pardon?
That's the EDA report.
I didn't hear that.
EDA.
I believe that's the EDA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But for the council, just so you know, that evidently isn't going to happen. And then, she also talked, she updated them on the review of the equipment share CUP, so all of the discussion that we had here. And she, you know, suggested that that would actually be a good learning point for them to listen in on that recording, because then, they will get a better sense of the kinds of conditions that you can come up with to help mitigate concerns of, you know, adjoining properties and things. So, I thought that was a really good idea. And then, lastly, she talked about Hidden Park and some new information that Jack has come up with in terms of the disposal of that and what, how that might affect the planning commission. And so, maybe you want to speak to that, Jack, because I didn't write down very many notes about that. I just know that she talked about it.
Which was the last one, again?
The Hidden Park. So, she talked about how, you know, we like, we have the green light to go ahead and sell that property, and then, what we would have to do with the comp plan amendment if that was what we were going to do, and-
We had been told for quite a while that that Hidden Park property was acquired by a land donation for park development fees. In that case, we couldn't sell it. If we wanted to dispose of the property, we'd have to go back to the original donor. After doing some research, we did find out it was acquired by tax forfeiture in 1987. So, we've held the property for more than 30 years. We did contact the county. They verified all that data, said, you know, we could sell it in order to be certain of this, since it was dedicated in the conditional use deed, in the condition, the use deed as a park use. We contacted the Department of Revenue. They also verified that we could sell the property. The issue with selling it now, though, is that we're going to have to go back to the Met Council and get a comp plan amendment for that, since we'll be changing, would be changing it from park use to residential use. So, that process could take approximately 120 days. We're getting everything ready. Eleanor has got some information, too, that we will submit to the city attorney for their review to finalize the authorization that we could actually sell that property. We did look on surrounding values of what potentially that lot could be. Property in that neighborhood is selling for about $60,000 to $65,000 per acre. This is 1.93 acres. So, based on that, the property could be sold somewhere in the neighborhood of $120,000 to $130,000 would be the estimated value of it. So, we're getting all those things lined up, and hopefully, we'll be able to come to you here in the next month or two and say, here's a proposal to sell the Hidden Park property and use those proceeds to pay for some of the park improvements that we're getting ready, or hopefully, be able to do this year on the tennis courts and some playground equipment replacement in the future. And that would be a funding source for some of those. As far as the other part goes, and this relates to this, we will be opening the bids for the tennis court reservicing and restripping for the different options for tennis courts and pickleball on next Tuesday, the 17th, at 2:00 p.m. So, we'll have that to report. But that's just the basic outline of the Hidden Park status.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
We don't have item number six. Jim isn't here, so there's no public works report.